Okay, it's seven o'clock. We'd ask everyone now to please take their seats. We'd like to get the meeting underway. This is a unique situation. This is the first time there's been a joint meeting of the Brielle Mayor and Council and the Planning Board. It's been advertised as a special meeting because under the Open Public Meetings Act, we have to, whenever there's a quorum, we have to conduct it as though we're a regular meeting. The reality is it's more of a presentation. And we want everyone to see this basically for the first time. Most of the Planning Board and almost everyone on Council, they haven't seen this. This is the first time they're going to see it. So you will note if you had, took an agenda, you'll see that it's bifurcated, the question period. We're going to allow the Planning Board and the Council to ask their questions first, then we're going to open it up to the public. The first speaker that we're going to recognize is Brendan Judge. He is an attorney representing some Brielle residents, and he's asked, because he has another commitment, if he could speak first, and we're going to extend that courtesy to him. And then, really, the only thing is, we're going to try to stick to a three-minute question period for everybody, because there's a lot of people, everybody's going to want to ask a question. So if you ask your question, we'd ask you not to ask a second question until everybody else has had an opportunity to ask their first question. And finally, we are on YouTube. And you may notice on the news, you see these rowdy meetings taking place, these town halls across the nation. But I think this is our opportunity to show what, how we are behaving in Brielle. We're respectful. We let the speaker speak. We don't interrupt her. And we should be able to get through this in a few minutes. Now, I'll turn this over to Mayor Garuso, who will open the meeting in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this special meeting of the Brielle Mayor and Council and Planning and Zoning Board has been given by placing a notice on the public bulletin board, Facebook, the municipal website, and publishing said notice in the Asbury Park Press. I also have a statement to make this evening. In regard to the fair share housing plan being presented to the Council, I want to advise the Council, the Planning Board, and the public that my son-in-law is employed by a firm that serves as an, as the engineering firm of one of the participants in the fair share housing plan. Therefore, in the interest of avoiding any issues, I'm going to remove myself from the hearing, the presentation tonight, and any further consideration of the plan going forward. There is a committee that will be handling that on the, on the, on the Mayor and Council, on Council. And I respect and, you know, appreciate, and I know they'll do the right thing. So good evening, everyone. Thank you very much.
Kendra? At this time, the, because it is a meeting, Ms. Barron, the municipal clerk, will take the roll call of the Council, and then Karen Brisbane, the Planning Board Secretary, will take the roll call. After that, we'll recognize Mr. Jeffrey Seranian and Kendra Lilly, who will make the presentation of the plan.
Member Form?
Here.
Councilmember Lawfer?
Here.
Councilmember Schach?
Here.
Councilmember Vashalia?
Here.
Karen?
Karen Brisbane, here. Kevin Callahan?
Here.
Amber Fernicola?
Here.
Jay Jones?
Here.
James Biolo?
Here.
Corinne Traynor?
Here.
Dan Turek?
Here.
James Stenson.
Yeah.
I would also like to announce that our Board Attorney, David Clark, is present, as well as Alan Hiller Jr., our Board Engineer.
And at this time, we will recognize Mr. Jeffrey Seranian.
I guess I should stand up so I can see everyone. My name is Jeff Seranian. I am the Affordable Housing Attorney for Brielle. My firm is Seranian Edwards, Boozak, and Nolan, just across the bridge. We represent towns all over the state on affordable housing. The purpose of tonight, it's the culmination of the efforts to try to voluntarily come up with a plan to satisfy your obligation. And Kendra Lilly is our planner, a very well-recognized, an excellent planner that helped, that's helping put the plan together. Instead of having a hearing, like many towns do, and just adopting the plan, the idea was to come, inform everyone what's taking shape. There will then be a plan. That will be the subject of another hearing. There may, there will also likely be an agreement at some point with the Mumford site, and that too will be the subject of a public action before anything is signed. So this is one step in a series of steps intended to culminate in the adoption of a plan by the deadline that we have to comply with, which is June 30th of this year. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Lilly.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kendra Lilly. I am from the firm of Kyle McManus. I'm a professional planner that's licensed in the state of New Jersey. I've been providing professional planning services to municipalities across New Jersey for over 30 years. I would say in the last 10 years, I have an expertise in affordable housing and have done many affordable housing plans for many municipalities. I've also been recognized by, as an expert, as what's called as special adjudicator in several visanages, courts within the state of New Jersey. I came on board with Brielle about this time last year to help them put together, start thinking about putting together an affordable housing plan. The purpose of this presentation, as Jeff had indicated, is not necessarily a public hearing. There is no adoption, no action occurring tonight. I really want this to be an information provision of information to all of you generally about affordable housing in the state, as well as it relates to the borough. But I also want to have your feedback. I want to answer your questions, and I, and truly would like feedback from all of you as it relates to affordable housing planning in, in the borough. So I'm going to start the presentation. I don't think it's going to take more than about 15 minutes. You've kind of heard what the, the next section would be, would be questions and answers from up here on the dais, and then also from all of you. And let's get started. Can you all see that? Okay, great. So the items that I'd like to cover tonight, this is kind of a quick outline, or the goals of the presentation. I'm going to try to pull this a little bit closer. So the first is affordable housing overview. So I'm not going to get into a whole history. We could be here for days talking about affordable housing in the state of New Jersey. But I do want to talk through things that are important to understand as we, as we talk about low and moderate income households in the, in the state, and what does that really mean? So we're going to talk about who qualifies for affordable housing. We're going to talk about the need in the state of New Jersey, and then regionally, and then down microscopically into the borough. What is the need of affordable housing? How did this obligation come to be? Then we're going to talk about the compliance plan. This is a proposed compliance plan. I've been working with several people within the municipality. You all know that there are several, what's known as builder's remedy suits, their lawsuits, and, and they will be talked about generally tonight. I will indicate that because we are in litigation, I can only talk about general information. I cannot talk about specifics, because we are in the middle of negotiating at least one or two of those builder remedy sites. But we will talk about a general compliance plan, enough meat there that you all can, it just, it won't be, you know, you'll be able to respond to it and ask some general questions. But I will indicate that if it's too general of a question, or too specific a question, I won't be able to answer it because of, I'm not at liberty to say, because of litigation. Finally, I'll talk about what the next steps are. Where do we go from here? What are the next opportunities for public input? And then finally, we'll get to the questions and answers. Okay. So the first slide here talks about qualifications, who qualifies. So the first thing I really want to talk about is, when we say low and moderate income households, what, what does that really mean? The Fair Housing Act, which is legislation that really guides affordable housing and how municipalities comply with their obligation, defines housing that's affordable to low and moderate income households as being 80% of the median income. And it's important to note that that 80% of the median income is of the region. You are Brielle's in Region Four, which includes Mercer, Monmouth, and Ocean Counties. So the state of New Jersey is broken up into six regions. You're in, in one of those regions, and the median income is based upon those counties. So it's not just Monmouth. It encompasses Mercer, Monmouth, and Ocean. I gave an example here of what a two-person family would be earning if they were to be considered moderate income. In this particular case, the, a median income earns $104,000. So 80% of that is approximately $83,000. That's what a two-person household is that would qualify for what's known as a moderate income household, or moderate income unit. As you'll see here, there are different subsections of what low and moderate income housing is. It also includes low income and then very low income. And you'll see what the ratios are with, with regards to low income. It's 50% of the median income, and with very low, it's 30% of median income. So when we talk about low and moderate income families, or I say affordable housing, these are the, this realm, this cohort of people, that's, that's who can afford affordable housing. As it relates to, okay, so fine, that's how much everybody makes. What does that mean as far as what, what a purchasing power has or the ability to afford a rent? With affordability on a two-person household, and this is looking at low to moderate income, you're probably looking about $130,000 to $230,000. That would be the worth of a house that somebody, and these, these are general, these are very general, but that'd be the worth of the house that somebody could purchase. On a rental side, somebody that makes a two-person household in that very low to moderate income is anywhere from $1,000 a month to $2,000 a month. So that's really what we're, when we're talking about, who can afford affordable housing? That's the, that's the range that we're dealing with. It changes every year as the federal government comes out with new HUD numbers, new income limits, or new levels. There's a new calculation completed, and typically, for the most part, those incomes go up slightly, as far as who can, who can afford affordable housing. The qualification process for folks that go through this, or are able to qualify, first they must show proof of income. So it's like you and me going for a mortgage. It's no, it really isn't any different. We have to go through the mortgage process. We have to prove, prove income. They are then put on, once their income's certified, they're put on a waiting list. And that waiting list is, pretty much stays in, in effect for a period of a couple of years. As units become available, the people from that waiting list are contacted, and they're let, they're, they're told that there's something available. If they're interested, they can go on kind of what I would call a second waiting list. The way that the, the initial, I guess, way that you would get into an affordable housing unit is actually through what's known as a lottery system. It's a random lottery system. There's no preference necessarily to people who live in Brielle. There is a preference, however, to folks that live in the region. So the qualification process is very strenuous. It is, it is by New Jersey law as to how the process moves forward, how people get income qualified, and then the lottery system as to how people get, go, actually go in to those units. So, so we're going to move on to the need. Most of you have heard there are these numbers obligations. There's a need of affordable housing in the state of New Jersey. Where that came from was way back in 1975, when the Supreme Court ruled on something known as the Mount Laurel case, and they had a Mount Laurel decision. Basically, that decision said that towns in the state of New Jersey, they are not allowed to exclusionary zone. And basically, what that means is, you can't just zone for single-family housing. You must allow from, for different varieties of housing, typically multifamily apartments. Think apartments as, when I talk about multifamily housing. That's one piece of it. The other piece of it was, you can't, not only can you not do exclusionary zoning, but you must provide a realistic opportunity for affordable housing within your municipality. And we're going to talk about what that means. Realistic opportunity, it means a very specific definition, and we'll go through that in a second. But one of the things that affordable housing planners such as myself throughout the state of New Jersey, we are trying to balance. We are trying to balance the need for affordable housing that we know is coming from the state, that they've given us a particular number. But it's also then looking at, how do we do that in such a way that it respects the community character? It does it with sound planning principles. We look at locations of potential projects and zoning to fit into the community character, but also take advantage of existing infrastructure, sewer and water, existing sidewalks, existing park locations near parks and schools, retail services. You know, that's really what our job is, is to lead the folks that you see up here and say, okay, yes, you have this obligation. Here's how we start to kind of think about the best way to, to divvy up that obligation, but in a way that doesn't, we hope that balances with the need with the community character. And that's what we're here tonight to talk about. You know, this is a proposed plan, and of course, we want your feedback, but, but it is, it is, it is something that needs to be done, because it is a constitutional obligation as decided by the, the Mount Laurel, the Mount Laurel decision by the Supreme Court. So we all know for sure we're in a national housing crisis, right? Across the country, not only is there not enough affordable housing for low and moderate income households, but we're also dealing with the segment of population, which is also called, in planner terms, the missing middle, where folks that don't quite qualify for low and moderate income households, but they also can't get into the market yet, they aren't able to necessarily afford the, the housing that we have, and therefore, we have a crisis. And of course, we all, we all know that we have issues with people that are unhoused as well. So the challenge that we have, not only in the, in the country, but also in the state, it calls for definitely providing for a variety of housing options. And while I've only been here about a year doing this work, when you look back at the planning efforts of Brielle as it relates to their master plan, and actually, boots on the ground, what has happened on the ground, you will find that over the past 25 years, you did a, you did a master plan in 2000. It included a housing element in fair share plan. That's basically your affordable housing plan. There was also one done recently, the last two years. But what you will find is that there are, there were, there was an R5, and still is an R5 zoning district, which allows for multifamily housing. Those are apartment units, so places like the Brandywine at Brielle is an example of that. Whalers Key and Union Place are examples of what would be considered affordable housing. You have attached single-family homes in different areas within the municipality. So you started to plan for this in 2000. There was a recognition, and I'll talk about this in a little while, but there was definitely a recognition that you, as a borough, just didn't have enough space, meaning you didn't have enough land to support the, the large obligation which we'll go through. And, and therefore, really started to think about just, just generally waiting for COA, Council on Affordable Housing, which was the administrative body before the courts took over, to really create rules and regulations for, for the borough to abide by. So you've planned for it to some degree, and you have implemented actually some affordable housing. However, it doesn't necessarily meet the definition as the state would define affordable housing. Any of the units that people go into have to be de-restricted for 30 years. That is only, it's only affordable for the low and moderate income households. That is one major restriction, and, and that's one of the ways that you would get credit for affordable housing. So the need, as you would see here, which is calculated by the state of New Jersey through what's known as the Fair Housing Act, as I said, that's a body of legislation that, that regulates affordable housing in the state. This need that you see on the screen is based upon household change in the state of New Jersey from 2010 to 2020. And then the 80,000 units comes from a multiplier, 40% of that change of households, the way that the Fair Housing Act reads, is that that number, 40%, the 80,000 units, are the number of low and moderate income houses that, that are, households that are needed in the state. So for the next 10 years, the goal is to hit 80,000 units of low and moderate income households. That is then brought into, it's divvied up, as I said, amongst the six regions, one of the regions of which Brielle's in, is Mercer, Ocean, Monmouth. That is divvied up, and there's about 13,000 units that then will be divvied up amongst municipalities throughout, throughout that region. So that really talks about the need, and that's what then drives the affordable housing obligation for the borough. As I indicated, the Fair Housing Act is the body of legislation that, that regulates affordable housing. Just last year, March of 2025, the Fair Housing Act was amended significantly, and it was signed by the, by the, obviously by the governor. And it did a couple of things. It established the affordable housing need, which I just talked about. It created a methodology of how that need is allocated amongst all municipalities. It creates a general regulation to some degree as to how we put together, what, what needs to go into affordable housing plan. It sets up a mediation process, and it's what's known as the program, to address any disputes on obligations, and then going forward, any affordable housing plans that we put together. So we will, as a borough, we, we've accepted our obligation of 65 for the fourth round, and I'll talk about that in a second. So you haven't had to go through what's known as mediation that actually ends next week. And so you've accepted your number. Your number will, will be 65 for what's known as the fourth round. However, we will put a plan together. It will be submitted by June of this year, and it will go through a mediation process. People have the option, have the ability to object to the plan, and we have the ability to mediate that. So there's a program that's set up by the Fair Housing Act that helps with those disputes. It establishes an approval process, and, which I just mentioned. It will go to court, however. So the program is a mediation arm. The mediation arm recommends something to the court. We will be still in a court situation, so the approval of our plan will, will come from the Superior Court in Monmouth County. And then it creates incentives for compliance to the law. And when I say incentives, it's more of a carrot, sorry, it's more of a stick than a carrot, meaning that the, while Jeff had mentioned it's a voluntary process, if you don't comply, you are open to what's known as a builder's remedy lawsuit, which we just, we just talked about. You have a couple of them now. So while it's voluntary, if you don't comply, you could be open to lawsuits. And so I always, I tend to call that a stick. Here is the obligation. This obligation, the large number that you see there, 419 affordable housing units, that represents a 48-year obligation. And I don't know if you can see it, but it, it is made up of three different rounds. There's a prior round, which covers 1987 to 1999. There's a second round, I'm sorry, there's a third round, which we are just ending. We will be ending it in June of this year, which ran, which was the longest round, between 1999 and 2025. And then we are moving into what's known as the fourth round, which will cover the next 10 years from 2025 to 2035. You can see the numbers up there. They are, they are big numbers, 159, 160, I'm sorry, 195 and 65. That all is pulled into one large number of 419 housing units. Generally, the way that the obligation is determined, it's been, since 1987, there's been lots of different ways of doing it, but generally, the way that, the way that you take the regional need and you divvy it up amongst the municipalities has to do with three main factors. One is income, the household income in the municipality as it relates to the region, non-residential valuations, the amount of commercial valuation that you have in a municipality, and the amount of land that you would have to develop. And they average those, what are called factors, to come up with your percentage of the need. And that's how, it's very, it was very clear in the new Fair Housing Act, the amendment, as to how the, the number 65 came to be for, for the fourth round. So while this is a large number, and you all may be like, how the heck did we do that with not a whole lot of vacant land? And, you know, how do we accommodate 419 new units? There is an adjustment that the regulations allow for towns like Brielle, who have what's known as a scarce resource, which is vacant land. You don't have enough vacant land to support that obligation. We do what's, what's known as a vacant land adjustment. So we look, we look through what really is vacant, what parcels are vacant that could support an inclusionary development. An inclusionary development basically is a development that would allow for at least five units of, of development with a set aside of 20% for affordable housing. So when I talk about inclusionary developments, and we'll talk about it tonight, there's a couple of them that, that we're going to go through. It basically means that about 80% of the development is market rate units, and 20% is affordable housing. So it's some, it's what's known as a set aside for affordable housing. That's what inclusionary development or zoning is. When we do that vacant land analysis, we look at parcels that could support affordable housing. Doesn't necessarily mean that they would be built on those parcels. It's kind of a theoretical exercise, but based upon densities that we apply to those parcels, and what that set aside of affordable housing would be after we do that, that is what actually is, what is your number, or your realistic development, excuse me, realistic development potential. So those 419 units, that very large number, is broken into two pieces. One is the RDP, or what I just mentioned, the realistic development potential, and that's based upon a vacant land analysis. And then the remainder is the unmet need, 395. We treat them differently. The RDP is a number that has to be realistic. We have to create a plan that will realistically produce units in a, in a, in a realistic timeframe. The unmet need is, we provide mechanisms that provide for meaningful capture of affordable housing into the future. We may never hit that number, ever, but we have to at least put into mechanisms that would help to capture affordable housing if development were to occur in the future throughout the municipality. And so this, when we did the vacant land analysis, I'm coming up with an RDP of 24, and we're going to talk about how we're going to meet that obligation, and then an unmet need, and we'll also talk about how we're going to meet that. So this is the proposed affordable housing plan. We are looking at two, two boxes. The first box is the RDP, 24 units. Within that RDP, the law allows us to take what's known as bonus credits. And so while we're still in the third round, this is what's known as our third round RDP. This will be our only RDP, but we are running by third round rules. We get bonus credits, meaning one for one. You, you provide one rental unit, you get a bonus credit for that. So what you'll see up here is that there's actually 18 true units that are being proposed, and then we're taking advantage of six bonus credits, or what is also known as paper credits. So they, the third round rules have incentivized municipalities to provide for family rental housing, which tends to be the most accessible housing for low and moderate income households. So what you will see here, and I'll go through this by step by step for these projects, but I just wanted to give you the summary and the overview of it. We have 628 Higgins Avenue. That's also known as what we've been calling it as the M&amp;D site. This is, and I'll go through it in a second, but basically, it includes, that is, that's an inclusionary housing project. 704 Rankin Road is the Mumford Project. That is also an inclusionary project. 636 Borey Avenue, this is a lot that's owned by the borough, and I'll go through it in a little bit more detail, but this is what would be known as 100% project, meaning that 100% of the affordable housing units that will be built are affordable to low and moderate income households. And that's usually, it is part of a, a partnership with a nonprofit organization that builds 100% affordable housing. And then finally, we're going to recommend that Higgins Avenue, all of it, be considered a redevelopment area, and we would do a corridor plan, redevelopment plan for that, which, which I'll talk about in a second. and we would do a corridor plan, redevelopment plan for that, which I'll talk about in a second. The unmet need is taken into account and then we look at satisfying that unmet need, that larger number through a couple of mechanisms, including a mandatory set aside ordinance, a development fee ordinance, and then potentially overlay zoning over not only Higgins Avenue, but potentially Union. And I'll talk about unmet need in a little bit. I want to kind of get into the RDP first and we'll talk about unmet need after that. So this is the first site that is in the plan. This is a builder's remedy site. They came to the borough probably about a year and a half ago and sued under a builder's remedy lawsuit. The case was settled, so I can talk about the details. The redevelopment plan was adopted. The redevelopment plan included, it was about fifteen units an acre. That was the density. But what you'll see here is obviously included twenty townhome units. It was on one point three-three acres and this sits right across from the gym on Higgins Avenue. On this particular parcel, the twenty townhome units will be rental units. They will not be for sale. And because they are rental units, you get three bonus credits for the three affordable housing units that they are providing as part of this project. And so this particular project, as I said, is zoned, is approved. And my understanding is they've submitted an application for site plan approval at the planning board. This is a representation of the architecture. We spent a lot of time with this developer coming up with a decent architectural design as well as a site layout. As you see here, I think for everybody, as you start to kind of think about affordable housing and what's it going to look like, this is a very good representation of what your borough officials want to see in any inclusionary development as it relates to building massing, how it relates to the street. As you'll notice here, Higgins Avenue is to the left-hand side. These are front-facing townhomes with rear-entry garages. So you have Porsches, you have face-forward or public-facing units. And so that you're engaging, that's very important, obviously, to engage a community, especially on Higgins Avenue as we start to kind of think about redevelopment opportunities along Higgins Avenue. So this gives everybody, at least I think, an idea of what, as we move forward, what the borough is hoping to accomplish with other builders or projects that would be coming to the borough for affordable housing or inclusionary zoning. The second is what's known as, I'm calling it the Mumford Site. This one is underlit, is still under negotiation. This is another site that was a builder's remedy site lawsuit. This is located at seven oh four to seven oh eight Rankin Road. It's about six point seven acres. And the density that's being had here, as we start to kind of go through this, but I feel comfortable that I can divulge this, is that it's twenty-five townhouse units. That equals about a density of three point seven units an acre on this property. There will be two units set aside as affordable housing units, two townhouses. And then two of the units will have three bedrooms, which are for special needs. So folks that have support of in special needs, needs for housing, actually provide, you get credit for each bedroom. So in this particular instance, there may be six to seven bedrooms. But you get, so for two units, you would actually get six to seven credits per unit, for those two units. So that's important to understand is that there's a limited amount of building on this property, but you're actually getting, you're getting a lot of credits for these particular units. What I can share with you is that the site plan that's been presented, or concept plan that's been presented to the borough as it relates to, I think it was eleven single-family homes that was originally proposed on that property, definitely seeing less impervious coverage. You're seeing more buffering around the outskirts of this lot. You are seeing greater building setbacks, or we are seeing it, you will see it eventually. And again, we get some additional credits for the special needs units. This is the Borey Avenue Site. This is owned by the borough. And what we are looking at, this is about a point three-four acre, a little bit of an oversized lot on this area, on this street. We are looking to work with a nonprofit developer in the state that does a lot of these small, what I would call small infill projects, wherein we would provide for probably five to six rental units, but it would look like a single-family home. Probably an oversized, single-family home. Again, in this particular instance, because they are rental units, we would get additional bonus credits. Now, we can only take three additional bonus credits, even though they're providing more units, because we are maxed out. There's a maximum number of bonus credits that you can take, which is twenty-five percent of your obligation. So it's always a goal to max out your bonus credits, obviously, because you're getting a two-for-one credit for it. The one thing that I wanted to urge all of you to kind of think about is, as I mentioned in the beginning, one of the things that we do as affordable housing planners is to kind of take this obligation and provide for good planning, sound planning principles. This lot is in an excellent location. It has access to sidewalks, it's within walking distance to the libraries and walking distance to the park, to the school. So as it relates to, and it's an infill type of development, so I think seamlessly fit into the community very well, but also getting a really good number of credits for a small piece of property without feeling like it's overburdened. And then finally, which is the Higgins Avenue redevelopment area. You will see at the bottom right of the aerial, it says the High Tide BR Site. That's the High Tide Builders Remedy Site. You all know, I'm sure most of you know, that the town's been sued by what's known as High Tide. And while we have not, we're still in negotiations, we have not settled with this particular developer. One of the ways that we are pulling this property into the plan, but not at the necessarily the density or the number of units that was proposed at this point, was to really look at, and this somewhat came from the planning board, like look at the entire corridor. We want to redevelop this corridor, most likely for mixed use. So let's look at a redevelopment area that encompasses the entire corridor and provide for zoning that would allow for mixed use. So think about retail bottom or commercial bottom and one or two stories of apartments above along this area. This would be zoning. So these aren't necessary, this is not a project. This is something that would give an opportunity for a developer to come in to redevelop. The interesting part about this is that we are meeting our RDP with those other projects. The only thing that we really need to realize from this redevelopment zone to meet our affordable housing obligation is ten total new units, of which two have to be affordable. So the zoning here, we haven't gone through. Redevelopment is a two-step process. We need to go through an area need study to determine whether these parcels meet the criteria per state law as to whether it's an area need or redevelopment, which I know the area, I feel like a good number of them could meet that criteria. And then we would do a redevelopment plan. And it really dovetails off of what your existing zoning is for this area. This is a gateway overlay zone, or at least a portion of it. And in that gateway overlay zone, your master plan and your zoning already support this main street theme. So we're really just, we're kind of just piggybacking off of that and looking at this. And really, instead of looking at a specific site, just looking at the High Tide site and thinking about what should happen there, I think we're looking at it globally or comprehensively as to how do we look at this entire corridor but then fit that site into it and what makes sense for development in that area. I will say to you that the M and D site, which has been approved, that was a redevelopment area. That was fifteen units an acre. I would imagine that we're probably in and around that density, somewhere between ten to twelve to fifteen units an acre, excuse me, depending upon the use of that particular property, of the properties within this area. You'll see that it encompasses about thirty parcels, which is about fourteen acres. So in summary, this gives you a good sense of the number of credits each of the projects is providing. So six credits from the M and D site, eight to nine credits from the Mumford Site, eight credits for the Borey Avenue Site and potentially two credits for, this goes to RDP for the Higgins redevelopment area. As it relates to unmet need, these are the mechanisms that have been adopted and allowed for in the past. A mandatory set aside ordinance is basically a blanket-wide ordinance across the entire municipality that says if anybody develops five or more units, they are to provide affordable housing set aside. That's basically it. So if somebody gets a used variance to provide more than five units, they have to provide a set aside. It's capturing affordable housing as new development potentially occurs. Development fee ordinance allows the borough to collect development fees on residential improvements, typically new homes, as well as non-residential improvements. The residential improvements can go up to one point five percent of the assessed value of that new home. And the non-residential improvements could go up to two point five percent of the assessed value of that new improvement. The residential development fee is regulated by the municipality. The two point five non-residential fee is regulated by the state. We can't change that. But that development fee ordinance, as the municipality collects fees, they can then use it for affordable housing purposes. They can use it to pay administrative fees, like my costs as well as Jeff's costs. It can provide for helping a nonprofit build affordable housing. So there's lots of ways that as you build up that development fee ordinance, it takes the burden off the municipality or the general fund and allows for a funding source for new affordable housing. And then finally, one of the things that we're contemplating is the overlay zone that we would do for Higgins Avenue. If we get above and beyond, let's say, two units of affordable housing, it would go, it would go then to what's known as this unmet need, that larger number. We are also contemplating and would like to hear certainly your feedback about maybe doing an overlay zone on Union Avenue as well as to, you know, maybe that makes some sense to capture any new future redevelopment that would occur in that location. So hopefully, it wasn't too long and long-winded. But the next steps from this, before we get to questions and feedback, is we will finalize the Housing Element Fair Share Plan, which I've been calling the Affordable Housing Plan. That will most likely occur in May, where there will be a public hearing in front of the planning board. The planning board is the entity that adopts the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. It's part of your master plan. And they will have a public hearing where they would listen to public comments. There will be a plan that's on file ten days before that hearing, so everybody has a chance to review it. And so that's required by municipal land use law. After that, sometime in June, the borough governing body will have to endorse that plan. And then we would submit it to the court or to the program for approval, which could take several months for that to occur. And so that's really the next steps. There will be opportunities beyond that. So as, for instance, there are settlement agreements, let's say with the Mumford Site, the governing body would have to go through that settlement agreement in public and sign it and pass it by resolution. That's an opportunity for continually to understand what that particular development may look like. And so, and then with the redevelopment plan, there will be several opportunities, both at the planning board and the governing body, to review the redevelopment plan. So conceptually, that's the overall plan. The details, I can go through some things. I can't go through other things. But certainly, happy planning board and governing body to answer any questions that you all may have. And then I guess we'll open it up.
Sorry. Elliot Cologne, Brielle, councilperson. Just two questions. If we, if this plan is approved by the planning board and the mayor and council and it goes to the state and if the Department of Community Affairs gives its blessing, in other words approves it, will we have obtained compliance?
So the plan will go to the program, which is a panel of judges first. DCA has nothing to do with it. The panel of judges will make, there's an opportunity for objections to occur. So a developer could object to the plan. Fair Share Housing Center, which is a non-for-profit organization that represents low and moderate income household interest throughout state New Jersey, could object to the plan. And we would sit in what's known as mediation and settlement. If we, let's assume we get through that, the plan is what it is. There will be what's known as a judgment of compliance from the Superior Court. And that is basically your approval of the plan.
So even if we obtain compliance based upon the plan, would we still possibly be subject to any builder remedy suits?
So what's interesting about vacant land towns is because that, as you recall in that slide, it's broken up into two pieces, RDP and unmet need, that unmet need means that you've never really completely met your need. And so there's a presumption of validity when you submit a plan and it's approved by the court. You have leverage, let's say. You have an ability to say you've done what you've said you wanted to do. That doesn't, however, exclude a developer to come in and say, I have this piece of property and I want to be a part of your plan and I'm going to try to sue you. We have a good defense because we have an approved plan from the court, but anybody can sue at any particular time.
So you'd be defendable but not go to proof?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
To put it another way, you have to sleep with one eye open if you're a vacant land town. Because at any point, someone could pop out and say, I'm here to help you. And then you have an issue that you have to face.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the governing body? Planning board? Yes, sir.
Before that was twelve units, twelve or eleven units. I'm not aware of any other plans coming before the planning board.
No, you wouldn't be. So it's in the middle of negotiations.
Negotiations, but if the property is such that they can't build there, there's all kinds of problems with the, they're going to take all of the trees down. There's all kinds of water problems coming in. With the eleven sites, they're building five or six different drainage ditches that all drain down into Rankin Road. Now, if it's questionable for twelve, what the hell is going to happen with twenty-four? And how can you plan for that if they haven't looked at it?
So I can't get into the details until the settlement agreement is finalized, which is pretty close. Those details will be allowed to go before the public at that point. I can say, though, because I've been part of the negotiations, is that what I said to you before is, compared to the eleven-unit plan, we're seeing less impervious coverage. We're seeing less clearing.
How?
Well.
They're taking all, they're taking all the plants down.
Sir, I would just ask that you would wait for the settlement agreement and for the concept plan and then we can go through it in more detail. I can't, I'm not at liberty to get into the details.
You're talking about a settlement agreement without looking at any of the material.
No, but that's the borough council's responsibility.
The borough council has a look at a plan for it.
There has been plans.
There's been plans for building there?
There are settlement agreements in the works. Yes, sir.
That makes no sense.
Anybody else from the planning board?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Is it fair to say that that a builder's, that the builder's remedy suits enable a builder to knowingly buy a piece of property that is not zoned the way he or she would like it to be zoned for a project that they have in mind?
It's the typical way of happening. Correct.
And so then they sue?
Yes.
And that's what we call a builder's remedy.
Yep, that's, the law allows for, that's the stick. If you're not compliant with what's known as the Mount Laurel Doctrine or the Mount Laurel Law, then you are open to a builder's remedy suit. And so, yeah, so builders are savvy. They know. I will mention also, and I think this probably may have come up in other public realms, is that vacant land towns, up until about a couple of years ago, really didn't feel a lot of risk that there was a builder that was going to come in. I think as you see the state of New Jersey, a lot of the vacant land in suburbia that has been eaten up through development, builders are now looking at redeveloping. And so that's what you're seeing now, is that you're seeing them coming to the smaller areas. So, you know, while it may have not been a risk twenty years ago, definitely seeing more of a risk as it relates to a Brielle-type of town that doesn't have a lot of vacant land. But, yeah, they have every right to do that and they look for it. they have every right to do that, and they look for it.
So the implication of that is if we're not in compliance, this is a question, the implication seems to be that if we're not in compliance, then our zoning codes do not have a lot of teeth. Whereas, on the other hand, if we are in compliance, then our zoning codes do have, for lack of a better term.
Yeah. I mean, the idea is once you have a builder's remedy suit, you're trying to settle that, right? And we're putting together a plan voluntarily. We want the court to approve it, and so we have legitimate zoning codes. If we, and there's been a couple municipalities in the state, if we say, we're not doing anything, your zoning power could be taken away if we decide that we're just going to, you know, put our feet in the ground, and we're not going to move, and we're not going to settle, we're not going to put a plan together and be proactive. That's a possibility. Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Just in my own, it seems that out of the 564 towns in New Jersey, over 160 of them are non-compliant. That's more than one-fourth, right? Why would, is there a strategy of just not being compliant? I mean, I know we're trying really hard to become compliant.
Yeah.
And I know we're, you know, this exhaustive effort to become compliant, hiring you, hiring the other experts, but there's a lot of work that's going into this. Why are 160 other municipalities saying we don't have to go through all this work? Or maybe they're just trying, but they're not successful?
No, I would imagine there are some, and I know of a couple, that have chosen not to participate in the fourth round. And it's a risk benefit. You know, is there enough of a risk to put us in a place where we want to put a plan together? Are we just willing to deal with developers as they come along? The risk, however, is even if you want to deal with developers as they come along, a judge could basically say, I need a plan. I don't want you just dealing with the developers. I want a plan for how you're going to provide for affordable housing. Technically, you need a Housing Element Fair Share Plan in order to have legitimate zoning. So it is a requirement of municipal land use law. Why folks aren't necessarily complying with going into the program is a policy decision, and it's obviously different for each municipality. But they're taking a potential risk of dealing with additional builder's remedy lawsuits.
So the council of sorts for whatever town that's ignoring this is choosing
Yeah.
to accept the risk by not.
Pretty much. I mean, I don't know all 160 towns and their situations, but that's, I would say generally across the board.
Okay. Thank you.
In this process that has just been created by the amendment to the Fair Housing Act last year, 440 of the 560-odd municipalities have elected to participate. That means that there's over 100 that have elected not to. So there's a fair number that are rolling the dice.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
How does the settlement of the M&amp;D site with regards to density impacts this going forward? We obviously increased our density up to 15 units per acre. Does that help us?
I mean, it's a good precedent. I mean, for townhouse development, I think, as I said, we spent a lot of time on the layout of that and making sure that it wasn't overly developed or feeling like it was too much of a building mass. And so it gives a good example of what 15 units an acre looks like and is acceptable to the governing body and to the Planning Board. And so it's a good representation. Now, it could, there could be a different type of unit, too. So multifamily housing, apartments, may look a little bit different, which, you know, may change the density a bit. But I think it's always about how you fit that into the community, the neighborhood character, and how does that dovetail into what's existing around it and not necessarily dealing with things that would, in my opinion, be, you know, not sound planning.
Which ultimately could help us with the high tide.
Possibly.
Does a paving moratorium apply to builder's remedies?
Does the what? I'm sorry.
Paving moratorium?
There's certain roads that the town is repaving, and they're imposing, I think, a five-year moratorium where you can't open those roads for any utilities or the like since they're just being repaved.
I would imagine that would be dealt with in a settlement agreement.
I have a question, too.
Yes, ma'am.
Could you talk a little bit about people's obligations for off-track improvements and who bears the cost? There's a lot of concerns that the community has right now, in particular concerning our water supply in town. And I think that people are concerned about increasing the number of residential units when there hasn't been any talk yet tonight about the off-track improvements and who bears that cost.
Sure. It's a good question. So off-track improvements are prorata shares. So a developer comes in, and they have X number of units, and they require X number of whatever, water or sewer, and there needs to be an improvement of that utility to get to that site. They are responsible for the prorata share of that utility. So that's typically how that's dealt with.
Kendra, I just wanted to say, you call it Rankin Road, and really, the application before the Planning Board is for the end of Rathgen Road. It's on the corner of Rankin Rathgen, but it's really up, so it really should say Rathgen Road.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Any other questions up at the dais? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. I think we're going to line up at the mic, and I believe this is the gentleman that has first dibs, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. You're just making a statement. You don't need me to stand up here. Are you just making a statement, or are you have questions?
I'm going to make a statement and then introduce some testimony from a planner.
Okay. I'll stand back.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council and the Planning Board. My name is Brendan Judge, and I'm with the law firm of Connell Foley. I represent a nonprofit corporation known as Preserving Our Town, which is comprised of three Brielle residents, George Harms, Michael Craig, and Lauren Harms, who are here in the audience tonight. First, I want to thank the council and the Planning Board for conducting this informational meeting. We recognize that you're under no obligation to do so. We appreciate the effort towards transparency. We also appreciate your efforts to deal with affordable housing and development issues. These are complex and time-consuming issues, especially when you're faced with a builder's remedy lawsuit such as the builder's remedy lawsuit filed by High Tide Brielle to develop the Whiskey Lounge site. As some of you may know, I made a motion to intervene in that lawsuit on behalf of Preserving Our Town. That motion was denied at the trial level, and the issue is currently before the appellate division. The crux of our opposition to High Tide's development is that its concept is inconsistent with sound land use planning. Now, that is a factor that the New Jersey Supreme Court ruled in Mount Laurel II can be used to defeat a builder's remedy lawsuit. It fails to comply with sound land use planning. Now, I understand from Ms. Lely's presentation that the borough is considering a redevelopment zone for Higgins Avenue that would include the Whiskey Lounge site, that would reduce the density at that site. I'm not in a position to comment on that tonight. I have to review that with my clients, and also I understand that the density isn't set yet, somewhere between 10 and 12. But I can say we are encouraged that we see steps being taken towards sound land use planning. But what I want to do tonight is to formally object on the record to any development of the Whiskey Lounge site that is not consistent with sound land use planning, and especially to the High Tide Brielle site, concept. That's a concept that calls for 101 units in a four-story structure that absolutely is not consistent with sound land use planning. With me tonight is Michael Sullivan, a planner with Clark, Caton, and Hints, who's prepared to address the High Tide Brielle concept. Michael, could you first provide the council and the planning board with your credentials?
Okay. I'm Michael Sullivan. I'm a principal with Clark, Caton, Hints in Trenton, New Jersey. I'm a planner and a landscape architect in New Jersey. I've been a professional planner for 35 years, practicing predominantly in municipal milieu, municipal clients, planning boards, redevelopment plans, affordable housing plans, and the like.
Have you been recognized as an expert by any boards or courts on the issue of planning?
Yes, hundreds.
Are you familiar with High Tide's concept as proposed for the Whiskey Lounge site?
Yes.
Could you describe it, please?
Yes. The concept for the Whiskey Lounge site is a four-story building with 101 units, four-story multifamily building with apartments, 16 units, 15% of those are proposals of affordable housing. It has 181 parking spaces configured in such a way that they are underneath the building and constitute the first floor of the building. It also includes amenities, including an amenity deck on the fourth floor, which will be an outdoor recreational space on the fourth floor.
In your opinion, does the High Tide concept comply with sound land use planning?
I don't think it does. Can I tell you why? Okay. The High Tide use abuts an existing single-family neighborhood, the R2 residential neighborhood. And it doesn't comply with principal uses, density, building coverages, building setbacks, and other spatial relationships to the public streets and existing homes. And the floor area is excessive, and the floor area ratios are excessive. It doesn't comport to any of those. Not only is it incompatible with the residential district, but it eliminates the commercial potential of the C1 district. The total area of the C1 district is just over eight acres. The plaintiff's property, High Tide, is 1.65 acres, which is over 20% of the C1 zone. Development of the plaintiff's parcel, High Tide, would eliminate the ability to develop commercial uses in the zone, and that would equate to a reduction in commercial potential of about 44,000 to 45,000 square feet of commercial ratables. There are currently no multifamily dwellings in the C1 zone, so it's distinctly different from the character of that zone. And because it's inconsistent, it undermines the intent of the C1 zone as a commercial district. The percentage of the zone consisting of residential uses, because there are some residential uses within the C1 zone, would increase from about 20% to over 40%, so nearing almost 50%, getting towards 50% of the commercial zone. That's a substantial impact to the nature of the underlying C1 zone, which is required to reflect the existing character of the district. Pursuant to the New Jersey Municipal Land Use Law, Section 62, all zoning must reflect the character of the district to some extent. So you're undermining that. So it's not just a change to the property. It's effectively removing a portion of the C1 zone, effectively a zoning change. The average lot coverage in the C1 zone is about 25%. High Tide's lot coverage, 84%. That's 342% higher than the average of the properties in the C1 district. We talked about building height. Within the C1 district, the building heights range from about 14 feet to 30 feet, and they're two and a half stories roughly. The average building height is 21 feet. High Tide's four-story building is 47 feet, or 217% higher than that in the C1. Let's talk a little bit about the impacts to the residential neighborhood. The abutting neighborhoods to the south, the southwest, are entirely composed of single-family residential homes. It's redundant, residential homes. The neighborhood directly to the subject property, High Tide, is R2 zones, single-family zone, has older housing stock. Most of the housing stock, there were some as early as 1850, they're very noteworthy, that home. 80% of the dwellings were built before 1967, and most were built between 1976 and 2013. There's 39 single-family homes in that area. They're of appropriate size and scale with trees on the streets and yards and lots of light air and open space around those homes. It's a very pleasant, relatively low-density setting. Multifamily housing in that neighborhood is not permitted, but the High Tide proposal would put it right up against that neighborhood and would essentially loom over the neighborhood. So the character and the scale is very distinctly different from the R2 residential neighborhood, and there could be substantial impacts. The density, let's talk about the density. I think this is one of the most stark differences between the R2 single-family neighborhood and High Tide's proposal. The gross residential density is approximately 1 point units per acre within the R2 zone in that 39-home neighborhood. High Tide is at 61 units per acre. Okay, that's insane. It would exceed the existing density by 59 units per acre, which is 34 times the density of the R2 zone in that residential neighborhood. So the building height, the plaintiff's, High Tide, would also exceed the average height, 25 feet in the neighborhood, by 86%. And this is even, the height difference is even more important because when you go up four stories and then you put an amenity deck on there with speakers and hot tubs or whatever else you're going to put up there for people to have fun with, lights, that all is now emphasized. It's almost like having an outdoor fifth story which could impact the neighborhood. So due to its location and its size and scale and its density, its character, I don't think it represents sound planning to put any kind of development of that nature at that location in close proximity to those homes. And I also think it's detrimental to the C1 zone for commercial use. So that's what I base my opinion on, that it doesn't represent sound planning.
Thank you, Michael. Because High Tide's proposal does not, is not consistent with sound land use planning, I encourage this council to continue to fight the lawsuit. We are going to continue our efforts to participate in that lawsuit to join the fight with you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Richard DeGroot. I live at 915 Riverview Drive in Brielle. I've been a resident of this town for 47-plus years. At the last meeting I attended in January, my question was what constitutes sound planning? This gentleman gave us an idea, and please excuse my looking at this because I'm not a lawyer, but I looked this up, and it said if the proposed development is contrary to sound planning and represents a substantial environmental hazard, that should be denied. Rules have articulated these principles with a dozen site suitability criteria, including access, compliance with the flood hazard area, I would think being that close to the river, that's a flood hazard area, and adjacent to compatible land uses, and it requires adequate public services, police, et cetera, school. But it also requires an adequate water supply. A deck on top of that building would probably also add to any noise regulations that the town has, that has to be complied with within the town. In addressing sound planning, I'd like to know if any traffic studies have been done, because this is not just a local use. This is going to be summer use. People are going to have people coming down here for the summer. Have traffic studies been done? The other thing, this week, I spoke to Michael, I think McDonald, who was in charge of the water supply for Brielle and Manasquan and, I'm not sure, the other town. He told me that Brielle is a lot that I think it's 6 million gallons a quarter. He said 2 million come from each water tower and 2 million come from the Manasquan reservoir. And he said, we are already a town short of water, short, and we will be paying a penalty for overusing the reservoir. I think you mentioned that the builder will pay a prorata. That's not going to be the same once we start drawing more water. It's not going to be anywhere near the same, and we are already short of water. People coming down for the summer, they're going to take showers. So I don't know how sound planning can take that into account, aside from what... So I don't know how sound planning can take that into account, aside from what Mr. Harms' lawyer said.
So I'll address the first question and probably punt it to Al with regards to the water issue, who has much more information on that. As it relates to traffic study, there's not been any traffic studies.
It has not been?
There's not, we don't have a traffic study. I have to make it clear, we are in settlement negotiations with High Tide Site. I put on the record, I agree with Michael Sullivan. I believe that what has been proposed is not sound planning. So this borough is in the process of thinking, thinking out of the box as to how you include that site, but not anywhere near those densities at this point. So from a traffic impact perspective, traffic studies are typically done at a site plan level, and at that point, we would have traffic studies, but there's lots of steps that need to happen before we even consider anything on that particular site. So I understand your concern, but again, there is no negotiation or even a settlement that's coming close to what they're proposing at this point.
But does that mean that no traffic planning has to be done before?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that we have to go through that process as part of the redevelopment planning process, but it's not something that we're, we have done yet going into it. This is conceptually what we're presenting. I'm taking your feedback. Obviously, traffic is concerned, so we will make sure that we're aware of that. Al, can you talk to the water issue at all? It doesn't, we don't have to get into depth, but just kind of talk about what you know about the situation?
Sure. So the borough has been working proactively with the DEP to address the, let's say, the water shortfall. Most of that's based on calculations, their DEP calculations, and they're taking steps forward to addressing that, so that's not like an issue going forward. You know, one of the things that should be said is, you know, part of the troubles that we had last summer have, in large part, have to do with as many people that water their lawns with our potable water. You know, unfortunately, it's been fairly inexpensive to do that over the years, and I'd say, you know, I think it's, you know, kind of become like a common thing to just use the town water for the watering of lawns, but that's something that going forward is, needs to be curtailed, because we do have adequate sources for, let's say, the consumption within the town. It's just we don't have enough water to, you know, irrigate the town as well.
But, but the water, excuse me, but the water use, now you're talking about it as in the summer. I spoke to the man who is in charge of the water. He did not say this is a summer issue. This is a year-round issue. It's not a summer issue. And once our town starts paying a penalty for using more water, that's going to go on top of the water bills we just received. This is not a summer issue alone.
It's totaled over the course of the year, but it spikes for the six months that actually people do irrigation.
It may spike, but it's still an issue.
I think the water issue, as it relates to new development coming into town, we are aware of the need for getting potentially another water source. And so the town, the municipality is going to have to work through that process as well as we move forward. And so we, as it relates to affordable housing in the state of New Jersey, you can't put a moratorium on development, because you don't necessarily have sewer and water. You have to find the ability to get sewer and water into the municipality to support your obligation. And so that's something that the municipality will work towards and work with developers to ensure that, that they are going to have sufficient water supply. Can we move on to the next person? I think we're probably at-
I just wanted to say one last thing. This part of this sound planning said compliance with flood hazard. That should be in a flood zone.
It's partially in a flood zone. It sits right on the cusp of a flood zone, the High Tide Site. We've looked at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to make one last statement, just because you can-
You said that, you just said that.
No, no, this is my last statement. Just because you can do something does not mean that you should.
David Erickson, 301 Old Bridge Road. I appreciate all the professional planning testimony. It's probably accurate, but that project wasn't presented here, so I'm not going to comment on it. I'm going to focus on the ones that were. The two round, the two affordable housing sites that were identified, they're both round three sites?
Yes.
And you set, or one was settled with a 15% set aside instead of the 20?
Yes, I believe so.
Don't you have to change an ordinance or something, or?
No, it was part of the redevelopment plan for that parcel and it's part of the settlement agreement.
The second was also settled with a 15% set aside instead of a 20?
We haven't settled that case yet.
It's heading towards settlement, it was presented here with a 15% set aside instead of a 20.
It's, it's heading towards settlement. It may change.
Isn't that going to increase our future burden by taking 15 on the two that we're taking instead of 20?
Now, I think if you noticed on the, on the Mumford site, actually, we're getting more credits for that particular site, so it's a higher set, can I finish? It's a higher set aside. So essentially, we, as I said, that was a general understanding of what we think we're going to get. It may change, but it doesn't change our future requirements as it relates to ordinances or our obligation.
No, that wasn't my point. My point is, we could get a couple more units now by going to 20% and have less in the future, but I'll let that go. How are we getting bonus credits on round three sites when we were never a certified municipality?
Because you're getting rental bonus credits, they're rental units, you get bonus credits, it doesn't matter if you were previously non-certified or approved town or not.
No, we've never submitted anything to anybody-
Doesn't matter.
Okay, I'll let that one go too. Well, she's saying I'm wrong.
It does, you are wrong. It's not, it's, it's the case we-
I said I would let it go.
Okay, thank you.
I said I would let it go. You identified a redevelopment overlay zone of 14 acres, approximately. With a 15-unit-an-acre density, that will generate 200 units in total. If we take 20% of those units and require everybody to do 20% instead of 15, you'll generate 42.
Potentially, yep.
So we owe 395, and this plan generates 42.
So the, the way that the unmet need is put together for second, for the prior round and third round, there wasn't a mechanism, or there wasn't a metric, sorry, there wasn't a metric that said you had to meet so much of your unmet need. The third round, sorry, the fourth round says that you have to provide 25% of the units of the unmet need. So 65 units is our fourth round obligation, 25% of that is, I don't know it off the top of my head, 16 units, something like that. We have to provide that to meet our unmet need. As I said in the beginning, unmet need may never be met because of the number of units.
So my, my question really is-
I just want to add one thing to that, just to clear the record. There's a dispute as to what that 25% applies to. The plain language of the statute says the 25% applies to the RD pay. Fair Share Housing Center has taken the position contrary to the plain language of the statute, the unambiguous plain language of the statute, that that 25% applies to the unmet need for round four. You know, we're going to take the position that, like any judge knows, the plain language of the statute controls.
So I'm, I'm going to try to paraphrase what I think is happening here. So we're going to put, right now, we have two builders' remedies that we're settling because we can't defend ourselves. I heard, well, I heard somebody say that even if we do all this, the builders can still come in and file suit against us, even if we do everything you're doing. The builders can still come in and file suit against us. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we have no protection?
Well, you have some protection.
What kind of protection? If they come in and file suit, what protection?
Well, you will, if we have an approved plan, we would, we would argue that we have the right to determine how to address the obligation. But it is true that every municipality that secures approval of a plan that has a vacant land adjustment, if a site comes along after your plan is approved and that site is suitable for residential development, you have to deal with it.
So I guess what I'm thinking is, we're about to go to a judge and ask the judge if this plan is good enough, right? Good enough to approve it?
It has to comply with the regulations, correct? And they would approve it indicating that, that's what a judgment of compliance means, is that you're complying with the regulations.
So we, we've known about these obligations for decades. We currently have zero qualified affordable houses in Brielle.
I'm not aware of any deed-restricted affordable housing.
Zero. We have zero qualified affordable houses in Brielle. So we're going in front of a judge, and we're saying, we know we were supposed to build 400, we did zero. We have this plan that's going to generate 40, and we know we're supposed to do 400. The judge is going to say, good Brielle, or the judge is going to say, go back and start again?
Now, the judges, so the way that this works, and I've been doing this for lots of vacant land towns, and everything that I've proposed here tonight has been used and approved by a judge, or has been approved, used by municipalities and approved by a judge. I feel very confident that if we don't have Fair Share Housing come in and object to our plan, that a judge and a special adjudicator would come forward and say, this, this meets the obligation, and it meets the regulations per Council of Affordable Housing and the Fair Housing Act, yes.
And if Fair Share does step up and say they don't like it, then we're starting over?
No, I don't necessarily think we'll start over, but there is going to be a negotiation and settlement that would, would be had.
So we're really not sure, I mean, number one, a developer can come in and sue us anytime, no matter what, and we're not even sure if this plan is really going to be approved or not.
But listen, you got to start from somewhere. So this is where we're starting from. This is conceptually what's being proposed. I feel very confident that if it was before a judge, it would go through an approval process. But yeah, I mean, what we've answered is that there is likely, is a possibility of another builder coming in at some point in the future. I, however, feel confident that, that given our level of protection with a judgment of compliance, that we would be in a much better position than we potentially are now without any affordable housing plan.
I would also add that by virtue of having filed the declaratory judgment action in January, we have insulation, we have immunity from any developer that might sue us at this point.
I'm glad you brought that up. Miss Leely, I'd like to ask your professional opinion on something. With your review of Brielle's history, would you be willing to certify that Brielle has documented a voluntary, a history of voluntary compliance with the COER rules? Documented?
I don't know what you mean by documented.
Shown something. I mean, I did analysis of all the master plans, there hasn't been a single zoning ordinance enacted, they have said they don't have redevelopment zones.
If you're asking me to make a statement that would hurt the interest of my client, obviously, I am not going to answer you.
I asked her opinion, I asked her opinion, not you.
Let me, let me, I think I mentioned this in my, in my presentation. While the borough has not submitted to Council on Affordable Housing or the court, there was a housing element Fair Share Plan put together in the year 2000. There was one recently done in 2022. So as it relates to municipal land use law, you've done what you're supposed to do. I will say to you, I've looked at lots of, I work for lots of municipalities throughout the state. When I look at your zoning ordinance and the master plan, you have created opportunities for low and moderate income households. They may not be deed-restricted, but they would be available and affordable to folks that would meet those income criteria. So yes, there are examples of boots on the ground where they've done, they've done some of that work. It may not have been necessarily specifically as it relates to an obligation, but you definitely see a different, a variety of a housing stock, ranging from attached single families to condos, to apartments, to townhouses throughout the state. So, so, you know, I don't think you're necessarily exclusionary zoning, even though there's a builder's remedy suit. You have created opportunities for densities upwards of six units per acre in certain zoning districts. So to answer your question, I think that there has been an opportunity, and you've seen actually some units being built that, in my opinion, are affordable to low and moderate income families.
Well, I love this town, and I think it's a great town. I think there's a lot of nice places to live, but it doesn't meet the letter of the law, and it doesn't give us protection. And when a builder comes in here, our zoning gets thrown out the window. That's what I'm worried about. We have no protection. Whatever zoning you're putting in place, if a builder comes in, he can do whatever he wants, just like the Whiskey Lounge is trying to do in its fight.
Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think we put a plan in place, a builder can't come in and do whatever he wants. I disagree.
Thank you.
Maybe I misunderstood you, but you did say if we were not in compliance, then our planning board has no jurisdiction, they have nothing to say. So he's right. If a builder comes in here, he could do whatever he wants.
No, that's not true.
What are we fighting for here?
So, so again, I'll reiterate, if you, if you adopt a housing element Fair Share Plan and you get court approval, what Mr. Serenian mentioned was, because we have unmet need, versus a town that doesn't have a lot of vacant land, because we have unmet need, a builder can come in and say, I have a site now that I want, and it's, and if it's suitable for residential development, I think that I should be a part of your plan. That the fact that we have approval does not disallow him to do that. I'm not saying he can do whatever he wants. We can say, fine, you've created an obligation on that property, but we think it should go into a different location. So we still have zoning control, we still have the ability to put our case before a court, so it's not as if anybody can just file suits and we have to deal with them. Once you receive approval from a court, and I got to tell you, builders know that, they don't want to fight an uphill battle. They don't want to spend a lot of money that, once a municipality has a judgment of compliance from a court, they're, they're looking at other locations. They, they have limited resources, limited time, they don't want to spend years fighting, fighting a lawsuit. So I would disagree that, I don't think that that's the case.
I should have mentioned, my name is Joe Nataoli, I live at 2 Crescent Drive. We have Whiskey Lounge as a project that's, doesn't meet the height requirements, setback requirements, none of the requirements. It's, it's something that you would build in Jersey City, not Brielle. Our planning board, the way I understand it, they have no say over that. Can they stop that project because it's too high, because it doesn't have setback, it has no landscaping? It's grossly inconsistent with these several projects that you put up here, you're talking 103 units. What, what do we have to fight that with?
So-
We don't have jurisdiction. These, these guys made a very good case about why we shouldn't approve that project, and they're, they're making the case to you.
So they have every-
They don't have, it sounds like a judge is going to decide, not you, not them, not me, not anybody in the room here.
If there is not a settlement agreement with this builder, it will go to a judge, and the testimony that you heard tonight will be very similar testimony that I put on the record in front of that judge.
But again, it's the judge that is deciding. Wait a minute, you said to me that I was wrong, that the planning board does have jurisdiction over this. Now you're telling me that they don't?
They do not.
The fact of the matter is, they don't have a set.
They don't, not right now, they don't. They, so, so a builder's remedy lawsuit is a lawsuit. They, the municipality is defending a lawsuit. That goes to court. The judge will make a determination as to what, if a builder's remedy lawsuit can be awarded, and if it is awarded, then it will come back to the municipality. I think you're maybe conflating two things.
When it comes back to the municipality, what jurisdiction or what, can our planning board say the building is too high? Can our planning board say there should be more setbacks? Can our planning board say there's no landscaping? Can our, can our planning board say the traffic is going to be horrendous for this size of a project in this area?
Sir, I have to, I have to make this clear. We are fighting this lawsuit. We will fight it tooth and nail at the, at the, at the Superior Court. The hope is, and I feel very confident, that we can prove that it is not sound planning, and it will be dismissed. That's our hope. I can't tell you what's going to happen after that, but this, this town is fighting that lawsuit, and I am responsible to ensure that I put proofs on the, on the record that it is not sound planning. I agree with you. I don't know if that helps.
Then what we need is experts like this to be at that court, not here talking to you, because what's the point? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim Rowe. I live at 626 Borey Avenue, and I was surprised to hear that we're on the list. Everybody here in this room is going to be very happy. I have one question, and that is, the Borey Avenue is part of a single-family home neighborhood. There are some rentals, but they are all single-family homes. All the homes have driveways where we park. There's still a lot of cars on the street, no curbs, no sidewalks. I'm wondering how you came to the conclusion that it would be logical to put six rental units on a one-third acre yard- units on a one-third acre yard lot on that street?
So as it relates to 100% affordable housing project, the thing that we look for is ways to utilize borough-owned property for things like that. And that's because if we had to provide for six rental units in an inclusionary zoning district, you would need 30 family homes in order to support that. So the idea behind 100% affordable housing is that municipality helps with the nonprofit to subsidize the 100% affordable housing project, pretty much by giving the land. But it also saves an additional units that would have to be had somewhere else in the municipality. So it's a bigger bang for your buck. In, in my opinion, and we've started to work with a nonprofit, we feel as though that the building could be designed in such a way that it, it looks like a single family home. Parking will be different, for sure. It's not going to be the same. But it is large enough lot that we believe five to six, I think we're going to end up around five once we get it done, but five rental units could fit into that home.
And will there be parking on the lot?
Yes.
Four, five, five cars?
Yep, per R S I S. Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Joseph DeCros. I am the president of Breaux Landing. We have a serious vested interest, of course, in the, in the property over water mints. First, I just want to thank everybody in the, in the administration for letting this meeting happen. Without it, we don't have an input. So I thank you on behalf of our entire community, number one. Number two, I know that you all are between a rock and a hard place. This is a, this is a freight train that I know was coming down the pike, and I think everybody now is trying to figure out how to best ameliorate or to solve these problems in some fashion. So I don't envy your positions, but I will say that I echo what Mr. Judge and his planner has said. We at Breaux Landing, what we look at, and we have a petition that we are going to present appropriate time. I've got at least 25 or 30 of the owners of our 56 unit owners that have already said, "We are vehemently opposed to the Whiskey Lounge project." I'm not going to belabor all of the things that, you know, Mr. Judge went through with the planner, but just as some food for thought for everybody, you know, we at Breaux Landing have extreme parking problems as it is in the summertime. And along Ashley Avenue, there is, just, there's no spots available, ever. It's gotten worse over the years. I've lived here since 2000. I grew up in Point Pleasant Beach, so I'm pretty familiar with the area in general. But the, but the Ashley Avenue parking is a real problem. I mean, we have cars being towed out of our property all the time, and I know that there was a proposal, I don't know what happened, or an application, for additional parking for the Marina, for an additional 13 to 15 spots at the end there. I don't know what happened with that, but when I look at this project, and I've had in our board meetings, along with the rest of the owners at Breaux Landing, we look at and say, just hypothetically, if 102 units go in there, four stories high, two cars per unit, not including guests, not including children, in conjunction with the project that was just approved across from the Breaux Sports Club, you've got another 20 units in there, times two cars is 40 cars, times guests and kids, the traffic alone on Higgins Avenue and Ashley Avenue is going to be off the charts. Then you're going to compound that with, with parking problems in addition to the safety concerns for everybody in that area. It's, it's going to be a nightmare for everyone, to the point where I think it's really going to change the dynamics of our community, especially in that area. And I know that you mentioned that the town is proposing a redevelopment or rehabilitation plan for Higgins Avenue. My concern on the redevelopment and rehabilitation plan that might be set forth is the following. In order to have a redevelopment or rehabilitation plan, you correct me if I'm wrong, I am an attorney, but I'm a trial attorney for medical malpractice cases. So this is not in my comfort zone. However, when we look at a redevelopment rehabilitation plan, doesn't the town have to then come up with how they're going to take the properties that are there to conform with the plan that's put forth? And in doing that, don't they have to then either by adverse or eminent domain with condemnation, take properties along Higgins Avenue?
No. There is, the redevelopment law allows for a non-condemnation area need a redevelopment study, and therefore it is really a zoning ordinance that would, as people want to redevelop their property, they would abide by the redevelopment plan. So it's purely a private entity or private motivation for development.
Okay, so it, it would not be subject to an eminent domain condemnation?
No, it would not.
Okay. I think that gives some comfort to other people that some of those properties are not just going to be taken by the town or whomever and redeveloped in some fashion without having a lot of say from the board and council and so forth. I think that's really critical in terms of what I have to go back to and answer the 56 owners about. But I will, I will just tell you that the enormous scope of what's being proposed there is, is really a dynamic problem, I think, for all of us in the, in the way it's being proposed. And the only, the thing I was confused about in your presentation was that when that property came up, it didn't say how many units are being proposed.
Yeah, so we're, we're not. We're basically saying we're going to treat the entire corridor and do some density on that, on the overall corridor. And, and what I would suggest is, as we move through that process, there will be public input sessions as to what that plan will look like. I'm, I'm throwing out densities that would probably be in the range of 10 to 12 to 15 units an acre. But it would depend upon, for instance, if it's a mixed use, it may be a little bit lower density because you'd have retail on the first floor. But, but from a, I don't have a specific density for that site. As I said, we're throwing it in to the redevelopment plan because that's how we're choosing to deal with that site through the plan right now. But we're, we're looking to spread the, the development overall of the corridor, so there's not such an intense amount occurring on one particular property.
Okay, so if it's, I forget what the acreage was, 13 or 14 acres at that site?
Yeah.
Times 10 units per acre? That, that's a pretty wide latitude, or am I, am I doing my math on that wrong?
And you have to remember, not everybody's going to redevelop their property. So you may not actually, you know, provide the true build out of that over the next 10 years or even over the next 20 years, but you're giving the opportunity for redevelopment to occur and then have a set aside of affordable housing as part of it.
Okay, and then really just lastly, I know that you're fighting this in court, and trust me, I've tried over 500 cases myself. It's not easy, especially being in the Chancery Division, which I'm assuming you're in front of the Chancery Judge in Monmouth?
We're in front of the Mount Laurel Judge in Monmouth.
Okay. And I'm assuming you're presenting expert testimony along with Mr. Judge and what the planners are going to say to present to that judge?
We are.
Okay. And just, if you could, could you just let us know who that judge is? Because I'm not familiar with the Mount Laurel Judge in Monmouth. I thought it was in front of the Chancery Court.
No, it's, go ahead.
There, there's a kind of odd process going on right now. We're before Judge Jones in the three builder's remedy lawsuits, and then we're now also entered the program, like this new process that's been established by the Fair Housing Act from last year.
Right.
So now we're going to have to go through that process. And I don't know that they figured out how one program integrates with the other. We may end up with the same judge. I don't know who is going to be the Vicinage Area Judge, but they set it up. So stage one is mediation. They have what they call the program. They have a retired judge that has a planner that tries to get you to settle. And then if you settle, you're done. If you don't settle, then you litigate, and ultimately you find yourself before whoever the Vicinage Area Judge is going to be. It may be Judge Jones, maybe someone else.
And just lastly, I think, I think the concern, of course, I can't speak for everybody. I can speak for 56 unit owners. But I think the concern is, is the town really going to bat and really fighting the litigation aspect of this in a way that we all at some point can say, "Listen, we did everything we could. It came down to a judge." And sometimes, you know, in my profession, trying cases, you think everything's going to go great, and you get some judge who's a renegade or somebody that's just, is going to go a different direction than where you're going, and you end up losing, or there's an issue, and you say, "Did I do everything we could?" So I think on behalf of Breaux Landing, you know, we just want you all to say, "We're doing everything we can. We're, we're devoting enough assets to this." Just from the turnout here and you all being present, I feel pretty comfortable that everybody's concerned enough that along with some of the other suits that we're joining in, and frankly, I'm trying to talk the board at Breaux Landing into joining into Mr. Judge's suit. I know it's in the appellate division, but, you know, we have a concern there, and it's, it's a large community right here in Breaux. But so thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
I can tell you, I can tell you one thing. The town was smart enough to hire one of the best planners in the state, if not the best planner in the state on affordable housing. Very credible and excellent witness. And the issue in a, in a builder's remedy suit is, is the proposed project clearly contrary to sound land use planning.
Great. And I'm sure there'll be transparency of what goes on.
If I was living next door, I would want her to testify.
Okay, gotcha. Just as long as, as we all kind of know what's going on in some fashion, I think, I think that provides a lot of security for everybody, knowing, okay, here's the status, here's what's going on, and we're doing everything we can. So I thank you. I really appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question?
Sure.
You mentioned before.
I'll try to be efficient.
Hold on one minute, sir.
When you were talking to the Whiskey Lounge, you said you were basically going to fight, fight it in court.
Yes.
When we talked about the Mumford Court, you didn't say that.
No, they're in settlement talks.
They're in settlement talks, although they haven't presented any kind of a proposal to the planning board.
Not to the planning board. It would go to the governing body. That's the process.
The, the council doesn't have the ramifications to look at.
Yeah, so it goes to the Affordable Housing Committee as well as the governing body, which includes members of your planning board on the Affordable Housing Committee.
Down, were you on that planning board? Did you see the program for the new houses?
I did.
Oh, you have?
Yeah. It's, again, litigation is confidential.
Well, that's very nice.
It's confidential negoti, litigation is confidential negotiations until a settlement agreement is had. Once the settlement agreement is had, the, that agreement will be public and everybody can review that. That doesn't mean that it won't come to the planning board. It will still come to the planning board.
You're basically telling them, "You can go ahead and do it," because the plan, the council has looked at it.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that.
You're not fighting it.
Okay.
Am I right?
No, I, I didn't say that. I said, it goes through a settlement agreement, which is in the process right now. It will, it will be finalized at some point in the future and will be made public, and you can comment on it at that point. I can't talk anymore about it, however.
No, I understood, but you're, you're not fighting it.
No, we're, no, there's a settlement that's occurring. Correct. Yes, sir. Sorry.
I am John R. Tissany. I live at 815 Rathgen Road, resident of Breaux for several decades. I'm particularly concerned about what's identified as 704, 708 Rankin Road, although it does not front on Rankin Road. It really is at the end of Rathgen Road, and it's called Rathgen Road Woods by the locals. This lot is particularly unsuited for this proposal of 25 townhouses. Its location, its topography, and its natural setting are inappropriate. It's steeply sloped. It has a stream that enters it. There are wetlands there. The developer, who appeared before the planning board, proposed to run the right-of-way of Rathgen Road through the wetlands transition area. And 25 townhouses on a very sloped lot would be, would require removal of the natural vegetation. The lot is very well densely vegetated. That vegetation holds soil and water, stormwater. The stormwater already runs off-site, and if you remove that vegetation and run it off-site, it is going to cause problems, or at least, well, the volume and velocity off-site, I think, would probably be increased. The prior application of the developer proposed several catch basins, which would have to be secured and cleared, and a complicated conduit system, which would lead into the stormwater system down Rathgen Road, down behind William Drive, ultimately to Rick's Run to the Manasquan River. So it, it is a site that should not be denuded. It also is a site in terms of location that's bordered by Highway 35, which is, which is a congested roadway. You're going to have 25 townhouses with cars coming and going to the intersection of Rathgen Road and Rankin Road, which I think is going to cause difficulties. The Breaux Environmental Commission, when it reviewed the prior plan, the developer's plan, said that that stormwater control system would not, it did not demonstrate safe control of stormwater off-site. It also is a location that is not appropriate for safe walking downtown or to services and commercial centers. It's in a quiet residential corner of, of Breaux. The site really needs, it's going to require protection by law of the wetlands, and also the lots, I think, are subject to CAFRA Coastal Area Facilities Review Act. And it's already been subdivided into various lots that have been developed. So CAFRA may well, I don't know, but may well limit and prevent 25 townhouses. Don't know. Something to be considered. But what is clear is this is a uniquely topographically challenging site that already discharges stormwater off-site, and the impervious surfaces, roadways, roofs of 25 townhouses would make it worse. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Virginia Lofton, South Street. I just had a couple of comments. One is on the Borey Avenue, that proposed location. I may be wrong, but I thought there was some water infrastructure on that lot, that it was a borough-owned lot that had some, I think I remember a water main break there about a year ago. So.
Do you want to answer that? I'm not aware of any easements or water mains on that lot.
Okay, I'm not, I just remember there, they were doing some water main work on that one. But that's not, I just wanted to make you aware of it. But it's also no sidewalks. It's not what you said it is. So, all right, I do want to go back to, you said that these affordable housing units have to be deed restricted for 30 years.
Correct, a minimum of 30 years.
Minimum of 30 years. What happens after 30 years?
So the deed restrictions actually stay on unless the governing body releases those deed restrictions. And actually, the new Fair Housing Act requires a minimum of 40, 40 years of a deed restriction, but it's, it's a minimum. So there's really nothing that happens. They don't just expire. The governing body would have to take action to, to release those deed restrictions after the 40 years.
And if those are released, they become market rate units?
They, they could become market rate units. However, there is a possibility of getting additional credits when those deed restrictions come due. If you re, what's called extend those credits, sorry, extend those deed restrictions, you actually get credits for those existing units going into whatever round that may be in the future.
And is it possible that a developer would consider that 30 years is over and they want to change them to market rate, that we'd end up in additional lawsuits?
No. I mean, it's really up to the governing body. That deed restriction is, is clearly on the, on the purview of the governing body.
Okay. And then the other thing is, when I saw your overlay for Higgins Avenue, the new development at the Greco property was not covered. I did not see that.
The M and D property?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in a separate redevelopment plan. That would, that, we've already done that redevelopment plan. It's already been approved and zoned.
But that doesn't get included as part of our?
It, it wouldn't really, because it's already been approved, and they're, they have rights underneath that redevelopment plan.
Okay. And then there was an opportunity for municipalities to purchase credit for affordable housing from other towns that, have any of our local municipalities done that, that protect them from this?
Yeah, that's called a regional contribution agreement. Those are no longer permitted, and they haven't been for 10 years plus.
2008.
2000 what?
2008.
2008.
So Breaux missed an opportunity to, to put an end to this.
You would only, you would only allow, they would only be allowed to do 50% of the obligation, and, and at that point in time, I would say the council on affordable housing regulations and rules were being overturned on a regular basis. And so it was available at one point, but it's no longer available.
Any other local municipalities? Any other local municipalities do that? Anybody around us?
Well, township did. They had a huge obligation back in the second round, in the prior round, and they did some RCAs elsewhere, yes.
And so, the other question is, when you say "we" are in settlement discussions, when you say "we," does that mean the council?
The borough council, yes.
And you're representing the council?
I am-
Or you're representing the borough in this settlement negotiation?
I am their planner, and helping them work through any settlement negotiations that they have.
But you're also working for M&amp;D on their-
No.
No.
No, I am the municipal planner. I don't represent private developers.
Okay, because, I, just confusing, because you showed their plan.
Yeah, because that was settled. The redevelopment plan is what I prepared for that property, which is, I would prepare for any property coming forward, because the zoning is per the municipality. And what I showed you was what was in the settlement agreement, their conceptual plans. So, I wasn't necessarily saying I came up with that. That was something that we worked, we being the Borough Council, Affordable Housing Committee, worked with that particular developer to come up with the redevelopment of that parcel, and that was one of the exhibits.
That picture that you showed now goes to the planning board for approval?
Correct, so-
So, there's still opportunity for discussion on that?
Yeah, the next step is that a site plan will be submitted to, and I think they already have, submitted to the planning board. It will go through the typical approval process with the planning board. And the way that the redevelopment plan was put together is that there's a specific concept plan, and a specific architectural plan that they must abide by when they submit to the planning board.
So, you've got a settlement, and then it comes before the planning board, and what if it turns out that what they have submitted for approval-
Is different?
Has issues, even though they have an approved settlement plan?
They would have to come back and change the redevelopment plan. If there's a substantial deviation from the plan that's been part of the zoning, which is the redevelopment plan-
Right.
They'd have to change the zoning in order to do that. But my understanding is, what they've submitted is, I believe the Borough Council has found that it was consistent with the redevelopment plan, as to what they've submitted at this point.
Consistent, but I think there were concerns with those building heights and ability for fire equipment to-
And that will be worked out with-
That gets worked out in-
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name's Rich Sidereko. I'm at 529 Borey Avenue, and my questions do pertain to the Borey Avenue parcel there. I guess the borough, being that they own that property, has offered this to be part of the plan, so that it can satisfy, partially satisfy the requirements?
Yes.
Okay. And are there any plans yet that have been developed?
No plans yet. We've talked with a nonprofit developer that's, has many years of experience of doing this. What I would offer up to the community is, once we do have plans, that we would have a neighborhood meeting to go through those plans and have feedback on those plans.
So, there would be an opportunity for neighbors to, as with these other properties that are under discussion, to have comment and provide input?
Yes.
Now, you did also mention that parking would not be the same. Is there going to be some kind of variance that reduces the parking on the lot itself? It's really not a very large parcel of land.
Yeah, they would have to-
It's very narrow, and it's deep, but it's narrow.
Yeah, they would have to provide parking onsite in accordance with residential site improvement standards, which is a state requirement on parking. So, what I meant was, it's not going to look like a single-family home necessarily. You'll most likely have a parking lot that will park those vehicles.
Is there some kind of timeframe that you would expect this to start to gain steam?
Once we receive court approval, we typically have about two years to actually put shovel in the ground. So, I would, I suspect you're probably looking at two to three years from now.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
My name is Bruce Jeffrey. I live at 804 Ashley Avenue, which is Catty Corner to Whiskey Lounge.
What's in here?
Can you speak into the mic?
Bruce Jeffrey, 804 Ashley Avenue, which is adjacent to Whiskey Lounge. I think a lot was said here in the best interest of the taxpayers. We covered a lot this past Monday at the council meeting, which I appreciate. Just a very, a couple of questions. Do we ultimately know what the status is of the liquor license at Whiskey Lounge? Has anybody researched that?
It was transcribed as that.
It was. Okay, thank you. Has any consideration been given to the town hall as to where it exists now, whether that is a site that could be devoted towards assisted living?
We have not looked at it for that particular use, but we did talk about the town hall as a potential site for future affordable housing. It was not carried forward, because we didn't think that there was enough land space to do that, given, I guess, the redevelopment of that parcel at some point.
I'm not sure I followed that.
You asked about the town hall?
Yeah, there's been discussions in the past to consolidate municipalities with other towns, and I was just wondering if that site was ever under consideration.
Not that I'm aware of.
Any thought to it, or is it too late?
Well, we're in the process of building a new borough hall on the side of LA.
Okay. All right, my next question. There was a recent settlement with the township to the owner of Waypoint for a couple hundred thousand dollars. The township messed up, I believe, and had to pay him. This is the same council that's representing us with this developer's remedy. Is that correct? I believe the answer is yes. All we ask is, as taxpayers, that you do the right thing and you fight a little bit harder.
If you sue, you've got your veins in this pocket. They have nothing to do with the affordable housing.
I understand that. But you represented the taxpayers with that particular suit, correct?
Well, I'm not the attorney that represented them, but I can tell you that the $250,000 was paid by Summit Risk Insurance.
I understand that. But they paid in behalf of the township?
Yes, they were. Sure, yes. That's why we have an umbrella policy to protect us in this type of situation.
Okay. Because the township possibly made the wrong decision?
I don't believe they did make the wrong decision.
Then why'd we pay $225,000?
I can say-
Are my facts incorrect?
It was a federal court. It was a simple suit, and the business decision was made that it was in the best interest of the taxpayer to get rid of this burden, and the insurance company paid the claim, and now we are done with it.
Okay. Just to give a perspective to the taxpayers, the amount of parking that's being considered for the site is almost twice as many parking spots in the lot adjacent to this building. So, when you all drove in here and had difficulty parking, that's how many cars they're proposing for this first floor. I thank you for your time.
Dave Erickson, I just had a quick follow-up on the Whiskey Lounge builder's remedy lawsuit aspects. That's currently been filed and sitting with Judge Jones. That's what I heard?
Yes.
And no matter what we do here, that particular lawsuit is going to stay with Judge Jones, because it's in the third round.
We'll see. I don't know that they, that the courts have figured out how they're going to interact with this new system.
No, but the option would be that round four gets pulled back to Judge Jones. This Whiskey Lounge is not leaving Judge Jones.
You know, the truth of the matter is, these judges are feeling their way. They don't really know. They're figuring it out as they go.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you so much for coming out tonight, and look forward to seeing all of you as we go into the next couple of months, and are at the planning board with the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. Thank you.